Three o'clock, I've got three o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. And if anyone in the audience has a phone, please turn it to silence. Join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, I'll go on roll. We have our district attorney, Tony Pierce here somewhere.
He's here.
And Supervisor Tinkle is here, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Feinbaum, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Flaherty, our district manager, Ms. Schumacher, and our CPA from Infomart, Stephen Blum. And first, we need to start with organizational matters. So I will turn that over to Chris.
Sure. And we have the oath of office for the new board members, the newly re-elected board members. If you'd like to stand and repeat, Mr. Guy, and also Mr. Banks.
Stand again.
Sure. And I do solemnly swear that I will support...
I solemnly swear that I will support...
...protection, defend the Constitution and government of the United States.
Protect, defend the Constitution of the government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
And I'm duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution.
And duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution.
And I will well and faithfully perform the duties of supervisor.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of supervisor.
I will send these down to you for signature. Thank you.
Okay, three.
Thank you. And then next, we have consideration for officers. Tony, do you address this?
No. Neither the manager does it.
We'll move forward with that. It will be for election of chair and vice chair. And the floor is open for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Margaret Feinberg for chairman.
I'd like to nominate Doug Banks as chairman.
I'd like to nominate Ed Tinkle for chair. Well, this will be interesting.
Do we have a second for Ms. Feinberg?
Nominations don't require a second.
That's correct. You beat me to it, Mr. Guy. You beat me to it.
Okay. But then we'll start with a vote.
That's correct.
And I'd like to vote, I'm all in favor of Margaret Feinberg for chair. Say aye.
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 At three.
And any opposed?
Any opposed?
Aye.
What was that, a pass or a no?
So Margaret Feinberg remains the chair for the board. And I have a resolution. Now we'll take nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Ed Tinkle for vice chair.
I'll nominate Bill Guy for vice chair.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay. For vice chairman, I'd like to take a vote for Mr. Ed Tinkle.
Hi.
You've got two.
And those opposed, I guess, for the record.
Opposed for the record?
Aye.
Opposed.
Three opposed. Okay. And then that would take care of that, which will...
I think we need to vote on Mr. Guy and vice chairman.
All right. And so the vote for Mr. Guy as vice chairman.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
Whatever you want to say.
So we have the record clear.
Two to three, three to two. So we have Margaret Feinberg as chairman and Mr. William Guy as vice chairman.
Thank you.
And then the other supervisors are assistant secretaries, is that right?
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to all other supervisory assistants. Assistant secretary also need to appoint the secretary. And Stephen, are you the secretary at the present time?
I might be the present time. I think I'm here in the treasurer.
The treasurer, okay. And so we need to all, we need the assistant secretary, the secretary and treasurer also.
So assistant secretaries are all board members?
All of the board members other than the chair and vice chair.
Okay. So I have a motion to appoint Mr. Tinkle, Mr. Banks, and Ms. Flaherty as... Mrs. Flaherty as vice...
Assistant secretary.
Assistant secretary. Motion?
Aye.
I think I mean Mr. Tinkle made the motion. And so there's a second. Ms. Flaherty, would you like that on?
I'll set second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five votes, assistant secretaries are Doug Banks, Mrs. Flaherty, and Mr. Ed Tinkle. And now, the treasurer or the secretary?
I can be both, either one. And Stephen, are you both secretary and treasurer or district?
In the past, I might have been. But obviously, it's up to the board at this point.
I'll make a motion to nominate Stephen Blum as the secretary and treasurer.
Second on that nomination?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor of appointing Stephen Blum as secretary and treasurer. Say aye.
Aye.
If any votes unanimous, Mr. Blum's appointed secretary and treasurer. And assistant secretary and assistant treasurer.
Oh, I'll...
We're all... With that, the resolution has passed, but those nominations is recorded. And we're ready to move on to the next...
Yeah. What I would suggest is just have one blanket. What's resolution number, Chris?
Resolution 2019-3. A resolution of board of supervisors, the Gateway Services Community Development District, designated the officers of the district, then providing an effective date...
And I would suggest that the motion to adopt that resolution with all the officers is previously approved.
The move.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's been the most complicated voting that we...
Yeah. Oh, well.
Okay. Could you ask the board members to stand against this wall so El can have a photo of the 2018...
Certainly.
We're standing here.
Apparently, we do.
For the record, as a rule.
I'll stand in the back.
What a Rhodes gallery this is. You don't have to turn it on the eye.
Rhodes scholars?
That's what I meant.
Thank you. If you'll send me a copy, that'll be my Christmas card.
All right. This brings us to the start of our regular meeting.
Can you give that to Chris?
Oh, did Doug sign it?
There you go. All right. That brings us to the start of our regular meeting. All right. If anyone wants to address the board, their sign-up sheets in the back, okay?
They're all right.
Okay. I was just looking. And if you'll turn them over to these two gentlemen wearing the ties, they'll see to it he gets to address the board. And with that, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes. Al and Boa? Thin Lex Drive, RV lot.
I'd like to thank the board for hearing me today. I'm here to speak in favor of the RV lot that's offered here in the community. Currently, there's only 22 spaces, I understand. I also understand that an expansion of that has been on the drawing boards for a number of years. I'd like to point out just a few things. First of all, the RV lot is the only amenity that we offer that pays for itself. The board, the community, has collected thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years, essentially, that has gone to support other programs. So I think it's very important that we continue it. Secondly, this is an amenity that's offered by other communities in the area. And the fact that if we don't expand it and we don't no longer have it, I think it puts it at a disadvantage relative to our community here in Gateway's not having the RV lot. I think I counted over 18 other communities that actually have RV lots in this area. Thirdly, it takes almost two years right now to get a spot over here. I mean, that's just ridiculous. We should certainly expand it. The demand is there. It can finance itself. I mean, just run a few basic numbers. If you're talking about a half a million dollar development, you could finance that over 15 years for around $3,000 and collect $6,000 a month for adding spaces. So the finances are there. I don't see any reason why we can't continue to offer this amenity in the community. It's a convenience to people. Boating, camping, those are fun family activities. And we should be a community noted for supporting those types of activities. So thank you very much. And I hope that the board seriously considers pushing this project forward to expand this lot and so that folks have a place to park their RV in the future.
Anyone else, Chris?
Yes. Mr. Bob Gepper, Bridgetowna water leak and Lennar dewatering.
Bob Gepper, Pelican Preserve, pond worker. And I'm just giving you a piece of information. Last Sunday, a leak was reported in Palazzo of a significant amount of water coming in from Bridgetown. I got ahold of Chris on Sunday. Give him an out of way for that. We came out and looked at it and determined that the leak was coming from the Bridgeport side of the Verne. And it was, in fact, we believe, an irrigation system that either failed, doesn't turn off, or they didn't turn it off, whatever. And he took action on Monday, followed up on Tuesday, still leaking Wednesday, still leaking Thursday, still leaking right now. So I just want you to be aware of that. While we were there investigating that, Lennar is building some new additional condos out there. And on construction sites, they were dewatering and pumping soap and sludge and everything else right into my source. So conversation has been had with Lee County, South Florida, City of Fort Myers. As I understand it, in the conversation with South Florida, they're going to site it this time because they've warned it enough times. But I've asked for copies of that. And I just wanted to make you aware of it.
No, we're not going through any holding or anything for settlements.
The street.
Settlement?
The street. No filter bags, no socks, just, you know, moussey pumping it out in the street on down the drain. Still nothing happened, as far as I know yet, at Preyto Pestoia, but that's just kind of an ongoing. But I just wanted to let you know they're not doing that. The drainage, they had a mill.
Did Lee County stop the dewatering?
It was stopped. I think the city, City of Fort Myers Inspector, it was stopped. We didn't come. But nevertheless, we don't catch it. This goes on and on more. It's not the first time I've seen it. Thank you.
We also have last, Mr. Phil Meese, Pelican Preserve. I'd like to speak when the item comes on the agenda, Mr. Meese.
Anyone else?
No.
All right. District manager, utility manager, it's...
I do have a few things I just wanted to bring up today. Recently, yesterday, we received reports from FEMA about reimbursements. And they actually sent these 62-page agreements that have to be executed in four different places. And right now, the total reimbursement that they've approved is $103,000. We had approximately $158,000 in costs. There were some additional costs at Pelican. As we sign these contracts, I wouldn't like to look for a check anytime soon. It could be months until that funding actually comes through. So that has finally gotten here, be executed, will be returned to them. That's the good part. On the downside, one thing we found out is we had a number of street signs and poles that were not included on our insurance listing. So since there was no denial by our company for them, people would not pay up the expense for those. And when the pool closes, we'll be utilizing pool staff to go around the buggies and take GPS coordinates and pictures of all those signs that add to our insurance list. So that was the downside we found out about. And also, any further disaster in the future, we're a little more prepared to go out and get GPS coordinates and photographic documentation on-site as it happens and fill out our reports in the same format that they're requesting for damage reimbursement.
And I'm sure, just a suggestion, what I would suggest is, yeah, it's the template they have for their agreement is pretty standard. I reviewed it for another client, and I'll just do this one. Chris provided me the copy today. There's not much that can be changed on those forms. It's kind of like dealing with DPN, SRF. But what I would suggest is to expedite it. Is that the board authorized the chairman and the vice chair to sign the documents after review by council and if appropriate by the engineer so that it doesn't, we don't, we don't have to mark it until it's signed. I think that's what your anticipation is, to get it done quickly?
Get a motion to approve. And the board previously approved, gave the district manager authority to sign these documents. That was about four months ago. But I would say designated representative to fee them.
Okay. I can just re-ratify and confirm that. I did have to adjust that based upon the fact we actually have the documents. Any idea what percent will recover on the total amount?
I'm probably looking about 60%.
That's much better than I would have guessed.
Mr. Banks?
Stephen, when the reimbursement money comes back in, how is that, where does that money go? It's going to go back into the funds where the expenditure was paid out of. And then depending upon the timing, we'll determine whether or not it goes into fiscal year 18 or is, goes into 19. But I think you were more concerned about the, where the cash goes, right? Yeah. Yeah. So the general fund will get, you know, its share. And if any other funds put in for any claims, they would get it. But I know just the general fund right now.
Okay. So there's royalties, royalties for whatever?
Yes, absolutely.
Chairman, we could have a motion to ratify, confirm the board access to these specific agreements to authorize the district manager to sign that and possibly get someone...
Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, aye. Could we exactly say what we made the motion for, to ratify?
Motion to ratify that Chris is the designated representative of the board to sign the FMA documents.
All, including the funding agreement with FEMA.
Including the funding agreement with FEMA.
Who was the...
I made it, Doug said.
Thank you.
Just briefly, too, also been working with property owner associations and property, individual property owners to secure construction easements for Lake Bank Restoration Program. We've held a couple meetings with the Hampton Park HOA and residents to discuss littoral maintenance. We had 20 people sitting at the table this week. Got a lot of good input from them and had the Opagenics contractors. So we're just working with the community to come up with a maintenance plan that's acceptable to them. And everybody's on the same page. Also had a report in here, too, up to date on some stormwater. We did a pipe inspection of all the roads, of all the pipes going under Griffin using a remote operated vehicle. And there was basic, only one or two inches of sediment in those pipes. And full reports there, and I have the video. And the project engineer's opinion was when Hurricane Irma came through, it scoured the larger pipes out due to the velocities. But we're just, as part of our pipe cleaning, we're inspecting those larger pipes, too.
Did you think that they would have more sediment there?
I thought they would, either at the beginning or the end of them there. But also, when you get that velocity, the kind of water that was moving through there, it didn't do such a good job cleaning the smaller pipes. But the larger ones, evidently, it did.
Keep in mind that all those waters are clean two years ago before it turned...
Once close to the road. That's good. District engineer, we'll be talking about the Lake Bank Restoration Project, our storm drain maintenance. Bid hit the papers today, advertisement. So a month from now, we'll be getting the bids in for that project.
For which one?
The storm drain cleaning. We have budgeted...
Oh, I thought that was next.
$210,000.
I thought that was the 10th.
Yes, sir.
Next week.
Well, it's on the street right now. It's advertised.
I saw the one in the paper Tuesday, I believe.
Right. It's storm drain?
Yeah, that was the storm drain cleaning.
And the conveyance will be going next week.
That's what it is.
Right. And we're following up about two weeks, staggering it. And we can take a look when we get the bids back, what the budget is and remaining funds. Also have the holiday event coming up tomorrow night. And I think it's probably greatly enhanced. We have four food trucks there. We have a very nice professional stage lighting and sound system. The typical activities, bounce house, Santa, face painting, jugglers. And also, at the end of the night, love fireworks. A display to kind of cap off the, the fire department will be there in attendance and several community groups. So we're open for good weather and think there'll be a good turnout. It'll be a nice event. And that's all I have.
I'll get some questions, Chris.
Sure.
First one, that storm...
Hard question. Did Pelican get notice of this holiday event?
I thought so.
First by the way, that's why I'm just guessing. Oh, maybe just me, didn't they?
It was an email that came out. I know I got it.
I know we put one in all the utility bills. So if you're a city of Fort Myers, discuss surrender.
Opportunity for next year.
Well, I'll put some flyers out tomorrow and take them over there. And we also sent out the size of utility bills. We sent them out to all the HOAs. And I thought that...
But we're happy without getting the bills.
Six to nine. Yep. Also in Lifestyle Magazine, can't be had included in there.
I think a monthly trial bill would be appropriate. Chris, we had a discussion within the last week on the storm sewer cleaning. And I had sent to you a listing of the sewers that were greater than 40% restricted in the rest of Gateway Greens to tie up with all the other communities. And it was a discussion about the 250. And my memory was that Doug had indicated, and I agreed with it, that we used the entire 350K on the storm sewer. And what we were looking at, the way of the flowway, was waiting on a verification as to the 2018 extra money left over in the bubble one account to use that for the flowway. I'd asked and hadn't seen anything and didn't know if you were going to present it. Where are we at on the estimated flowway? What's the engineer's estimate of the bid on the flowway? So we know how that relates to the amount of money that we potentially have coming in on 2018.
I'd have to reexamine that. We changed the scope a little bit. And also, I'd like to mention quickly related to that, in the next week, we're going to have both sides I-75 staked, where we have overgrowth and a sandbar there. And I've been talking to DVI. And they're going to give us an estimate, too, in January to clean out both sides. I've been strictly working with them. I don't think the cost is going to be that high. But they have the maintenance contract for I-75 for the right-of-way.
And they will go outside the right-of-way of the ruling?
Well, they will work on our property right there adjacent to the interstate. And our, the area...
Okay. So on our nickel outside the right-of-way?
Right. Yeah. And that's between the Colonial headwall and the DOT right-of-way. And also on the outfall on the west side of the interstate where there's a sandbar that's formed. And they can actually go over there from the interstate and work it with a long stick. So we're having it staked so they can get an idea of the volume of material they have to remove. But they don't have to get any special permits or access permits to be in the interstate right-of-way.
So when will we know what the total flowway estimate will be, including the new scope?
Well, that's going to be a minor portion of it. It'll be standalone because of DVI. And we'll be bidding out of the 19. That'll be advertised for the conveyance. So it'll come in the latter part of January.
We need to know the total dollar value to determine what the runover or the overrun from last year is available. We talked at the last meeting for something, which I would hope would more than enough cover the flowway.
Yeah, we had dollars. And...
Or something is what I...
And there's also some project schedules following the flowway report. In the back of the board, we'll just approximate dates.
Yeah. Were those schedules for the flowway project? They weren't for the pond project, were they?
No.
Okay.
There is one that has those laid out, the first one, and the flowway and the conveyance. Whether flowway, conveyance cleaning, and the storm drain cleaning. The three schedules are in there.
Okay. The Hampton Park, you addressed the Hampton Park meeting. And a document came out that that meeting that I'd like to have re-reviewed, it never got board approval as Tony sent out and found, I guess in December of 16, it was tabled and we've never done anything with it since. And talking with not only the Hampton Park HOA board, I talked to ours over at Gateway. And there is simply no interest in the HOAs being a middleman on this littoral DO issue. My suggestion is, is have staff go back, rewrite that addendum so that we can bring it back to this board for approval, such that anyone that has, any resident that has property that is in, on a lake that is DO requirements, where the littorals are not placed in accordance with the DO, can petition this board to have them removed. And make it a simple deal, resident to board. The last thing we want to do is go out and talk to 250, 300 property owners in Hampton Park and how many thousand in Gateway and have them go into the HOA board. That's, they don't even know what we're talking about. I'd rather have them, if they, that way if Guy has a littoral in his yard and it's not a DO littoral and he doesn't have a problem with it, we don't worry about it.
And then, and what do we, I can't remember where we landed on that as far as removal expenses?
Expenses are ours no matter what. But the issue is, is what we had originally was, it was more of a warning that if we take these out and you have a problem, just be ready for it, whether that's an aquatic problem or whether it's any other type of a problem. But we have that same issue everywhere. We're the ones that's responsible for it. But the issue that came out at that meeting, and we have received it, as I understand it, is notification of at least one property owner has contacted an attorney. And after talking to Jessica Salzar at Lee County Code Enforcement, I don't want to go down that road. We're going to lose. We're going to lose. She made it perfectly clear, you follow the DO, period. You follow the DO. That the DO doesn't have requirement for littorals, there's no reason for us to sit there and have property owners matter the dickens about it when they're not called to be there.
There's a productive meeting.
But we need to have that, yeah, I thought it was a productive meeting. We need to get that addendum back on. Because right now, we're referring to it and it's really technically not a approved addendum to the pond standard. So staff could put something together on that. But again, I'd leave out the HOAs. They do not want to be involved in the maintenance.
We'll let staff review that because I reviewed the document. It looked like a pretty good one, but the board would need to discuss it. So let's put that on.
Bring it back with options.
But we did it before. We just tabled it. And it got tabled now for over a year and a half. And we never got it.
Yeah. And from another perspective, depending upon how the board wants to proceed, once they're depending upon how it receives the staff's recommendation. Obviously, in other communities where the community boards prefer in each area, a single point of contact in each community as opposed to having 600 people in one community making 600 individual requests, that they go to that organization first and try to work it out. But that's something that, you know, Chris and Al will work with. Take something to the board. So there's, my mom would say six to one, half a dozen to the other, as in other reports.
Well, the HOAs, I can tell you, they're not interested. They don't want to be involved in it. It's a nightmare. First of all, they're not up to speed in understanding. That's what I get. As we found out in the... First of all, they're not up to speed in understanding, as we found out in the meeting. They, they didn't understand it. They were there simply because they were trying to carry on the meeting, but they don't want to be involved in it. And in my opinion, you haven't got that many people that are going to be coming in and asking for it to begin with, to where it's not a handful that we're dealing with to begin with. It's just not that big of a deal.
One other point, I guess, to the extent that the development order asylum as to requirement for littorals, I'm not sure, I understand the county says if you plant littorals voluntarily, that that's a violation of a code issue. If you go over and beyond or above, that's, because I understand the situation.
They're not planted, that's the problem.
Are they required to not plant it?
No. These, we're only dealing with littorals that are in non-DO zones. That's all we're dealing with. We're not doing anything to do with the DO. The DO says that you got a two hundred foot strip that requires littorals, that's as if it came down the mountain.
But that's a minimum. It says minimum and this is where you start, but it doesn't say they can't grow beyond that.
Margaret, I want to track you on that. It does not say minimum in the county's codes. The word minimum is not in there. That was said at the meeting the other day, that is not true. If you call and talk to the county, they will tell you, going twenty-five or greater, I brought this same conversation up when we were doing the pond standards. I said if twenty-five's good, lighten fifty better. We have nothing to show that we get any more benefit by going over twenty-one. And that's the reason they do the DO.
Yeah, and I guess the question is, we think we need some confirmation that as opposed from the county is if we do decide to exceed the, what's in the development order, if we decide to do more than the twenty-five percent, is that going to be construed as violating the county's land along the codes?
No. First thing that Jessica said you have to do if you're going to do that is come in for a DO amendment. And I don't want to go down that road, no way.
Well, Chris, can you, what we need to do is get in writing some sort of verification from the county, not, you know, hearsay, phone conversation.
Yeah, I think it's always good to have because if the county later on will be a different person now also.
Exactly.
Here's what we're relying upon, we have that kind of.
I'm sure it's got it written.
Exactly.
I mean, there's, it's got a blank line.
Well, like she told me, you got section ten four eighteen? Read it. No, I'm going to repeat what she said, it is in ten four eighteen, I agree with it.
Just a question to make sure I heard what Ed was saying. If you do not have littorals on your property, you can refuse to have them installed. But if you then subsequently have either washout or erosion, that could have been prevented by the installation of littorals, this body is still in the way to repair that?
Problem, Bob, that we.
It's just that. It's not what I heard at all.
First of all, the issue is, is she made it clear, if you want, you can check and call, I invite everybody to call. That's where you learn. The issue is, is that if you were going to do something that is not addressed in the development order, it will require an amendment. I don't want to go through any expensive development order amendments. That's ridiculous.
But what I, what I heard is basically correct.
To get back to the second issue, this is the problem we've had in Gateway since day one. You can't after the fact go in and put in littorals and think you're going to stabilize a bank. The first time it rains, they and the littorals end up down in the bank, in the pond. It doesn't work. If you stabilize the bank and have, like we had been talking, like over on one oh six, one oh seven, and one oh eight, we now have a stabilized bank, we can go in there and we can plant littorals into it. But to go out there right now and plant littorals on a shelf that's unprotected, not going to work.
Mr. Bankier?
We tried.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You may recall that two, maybe three years ago, this board spent many hours, maybe months discussing this problem. And the results of that conversation should be in our minutes, and we should direct the manager's attention to review what the board decided after those conversations.
We talked about pond standards bill?
Yes. And specifically littoral?
Yeah, I think Chris has that. What happened and what caused some issues is that after we had that meeting, we recognized as a result of some of the residents at Silver Lakes. The Silver Lakes issue brought to light the fact that we ran into the problem, how do you address the littorals that people do not want when they are not required? And at that time, I believe it was L. and, don't name, Molly wrote a document, a couple of pages long, that was brought to this board somewhere, I would put, November sixteen, December sixteen?
December two thousand sixteen.
Sixteen. And we tabled it, and we never did anything with it. But it was an attempt at creating an addendum to the pond standard that said how we were going to address the littoral issue on, when the DO is silent, was I think the words they used. And what we need to do is, we need to revisit that because that's exactly what we're running into up at Hampton Park. But I'm all for letting staff go back and get that and bring it back to us, but I think what we need to do is, at the same time, Chris, maybe the best way to do it is you could talk to Jessica, I had you in on all my emails that I had back and forth with her, and Carol List, that basically indicated, read the King's English. If it says in the DO to do it, do it. If it doesn't, amend it.
And I'm not that familiar with all the specifics of the DO, so if you've got a lake, does it show explicitly where littorals?
Yes.
So it'll show you on, okay.
And what Chris is talking about doing, and I think this is a good idea at Hampton Park, is because they on all fourteen ponds delineate exactly where they're to go, is to take that layout and superimpose it on an aerial photo, and then you can specifically tell which lots are in the littoral zone and which lots.
Let's just plug into our GIS.
Plugging it in is going to work.
And one thing we did bring up at that meeting too, because one thing the residents and the HOA board members said is they really aren't educated on it, and we recommended that they invite Mr. Gepper and Ernesto and Jessica to one of their meetings and have an open forum where they answer those questions to educate the residents.
We did that in Pelican, and the residents have been very supportive.
I mean, this is another example of how important having a master GIS like Pelican has, because if you have someone coming in with a request, you pull it up, boom, it'll show you exactly, you know, instead of having to dig through, you know, tons of documents, you could basically have a decision within a couple hours.
Next one I have is the soccer agreement that expires this month. When, are we going to talk about that at the January meeting?
Yes, sir, and I sent notices out to the three leagues, flag football, league soccer, and gateway soccer association to have the draft contract and our insurance certificates ready to go to that meeting and discuss it.
Okay, the next one, we had at the last meeting, a long discussion on the various R and R and capital projects. Where are we at on coming up with staff's opinion of a, what was the word you used, Margaret? A ranking, a priority listing? Where are we at on that so that we can start worrying about how we're paying for it?
We have an agenda item coming up to schedule another board advance.
Okay.
And we were going to do that ranking and that discussion at that advance and look at those finance options.
Rate study and assessment methodology studies, when are those going to be presented to the board?
They will be January third. Darrell will be here to present the connection fee study.
And the rate study?
Well, the rate study has been presented to the board. We'll bring that up again and then get the board's formal approval to adopt the studies. At that time, we will set the public hearing dates and we are working on the resolutions as we speak in the advertisements.
Next one, flowway plans and specs, I know we're going out to bid next week. Are those plans and specs available to look at?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to look at those.
Yeah, we made some changes to those based on some of the comments that you had, some comments from the engineer, just taking a little closer look at those areas where we had some impediments we didn't initially include, like the rock blockage on Pond one thirty.
Oh, okay.
Add those, calling it up.
Pond one oh six, one oh eight, one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight, and Cypress Cave Ponds, how are we doing those littorals? Are we bundling those littoral placements with another project or how are we doing those?
We're bundling those with the next six lakes that are out to bid, and then when those, that construction's.
Because that would be a separate bid, is that the way I understand it?
If the, and the water levels are down, then they'll come in and plant those littorals post-pond construction.
I'll hit you with this one right now because we'll talk about it here in a few minutes. The RV park that the gentleman brought up a while ago, we're looking at, rest I can tell, we're probably by the time we add in contingency and everything, we're going to be over six hundred thousand dollars for that. Has anybody done a revised cost benefit analysis that as to what the return? Are we still going to be in the window of five years or less to recoup the money for that? That works out, just for everybody in the audience to know, that works out to be a hundred, essentially a hundred dollars per resident equivalent in Gateway for ERU for that, that deal. And if we would finance it five years at three, three and a half percent, it'd be about twenty dollars a year per ERU to finance it.
I think it's going to be, because Mike and I were talking about this earlier, I think we're probably looking at about a seven year.
That far out?
Yeah. But, you know, if we can cut, maybe we cut some of that cost, either we finance it or we put in reserves or a portion, half and half, whatever. But I think, I think we're going to talk, is that?
Yeah, it's a gin.
We're going to talk, it's a gin, I'm sure we'll talk more detail.
Okay, so we need to talk about how that.
There's some options here if we, you know.
That's all I get.
Mrs. Flair?
I do have something. Mr. Shoemaker? I would like to say tell the staff to thank them for the fishing contest that was held on Saturday morning. It was very nice. There was some request that it be September next year, it's a little bit warmer, okay? But everyone had a great time, everyone.
It was a nice event, and we also got some good support from some of the vendors in San Antonio Capita Bank, and they had a lot of Bass Pro gift cards, including one they donated for a hundred dollar grand raffle prize. And it was kind of funny because the tiniest girl who was fishing won the biggest prize.
That's cute.
And she had the biggest smile on her face. I don't know if she quite comprehended the hundred dollars, but they had a good time.
That's good.
Chris, next you include Pelican?
Sure.
Hold it when we meet.
Can you check out the little girl, wait?
We don't have any little girls.
It's children's.
Oh, it's only children?
It's children's.
Forget it.
You always use volunteers.
We don't like prom stacks or anything.
And next is a discussion of scheduling a board advance, and Joe DeCervo was asking for the week of February eleventh.
So, are we going to go that far, Al?
That was when he was available to do it, so it'd be eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, fourteenth were the dates that he was looking at.
So that's Monday, the eleventh.
Monday's the eleventh?
Yep.
I've got Monday as the date.
Fourteenth is a Thursday.
Twenty-nineteenth.
That's where I am. Oh, there I was.
Is Tuesday an alternative? I think she's at eleven, twelve, or thirteen.
Yeah, he, any time that week, he was saying.
I'd rather do it on a Tuesday or a Thursday as opposed to a Monday or Wednesday.
Tuesday's not good for me.
Those are golf days.
What was that, please?
Tuesday's not good for me.
What'd you say?
Tuesday's not good for me in the morning.
Not good for you?
How about the thirteenth?
That's Thursday, that's Tuesday.
That's Wednesday.
How about Thursday?
No, that's, okay.
And that is an awful week for us.
Yes, it is.
So we could do a Thursday.
Thursday to fourteenth.
Oh, that's Valentine's Day.
Perfect.
Yeah. I can go with the fourteenth.
Feedback's on Thursday.
We took, we do mornings lunch, right? This time they have, they were looking at doing it from lunch into the afternoon.
Right. This time he wanted to start at the lunch hour because he was going to drive down here and then drive back.
We don't have to bump you, Mr. Gepper, we can always go over to Gateway hearings like we did last time.
That would be fun.
Or Stoney Brook.
Thursday, I'll use that one for you.
Thanks, I'm good.
Thursday, the fourteenth, you don't want, we gotta come up with a day that week, so.
Valentine's Day.
I'll bring flowers.
Okay. So the fourteenth at noon?
To be determined where.
We started noon?
Yes.
Seems like an awful week started.